Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on June 27, 2023, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of June 30, 2023. All in this will clerks, the townships, the boroughs within the Freehold Regional District have been duly notified, and the requirements of this posting have been met on June 27, 2023. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
Mr. Toscano, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. In addition to the items that were noted on the agenda that was printed prior to the start of the meeting, the Board also discussed, for exception, number three in HIV Appeal. For number seven, there was two additional matters. There was a matter under case number 3:23-CV-03946, and there was an update on a potential class action litigation settlement. Also, the Board did not discuss, for exception, number four, the negotiations with the Custodial Maintenance and Grounds Association.
Is that it?
That's all.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 19 regular Board meeting?
Ms. Capiello?
No.
Oh, it was Ms. Bruno? I'm sorry.
Any discussion, Board? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Bruno? Ms. Capiello?
Yes.
Ms. Finelli?
Yes.
Ms. Higley?
Yes.
Ms. Lavis?
Yes.
Mr. Cobb?
Yes.
Yes. Just a side note, communications are on file in the Office of the Board Secretary. Before we start with the Superintendent Report, I want to officially publicly welcome Dr. Hazel.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our new Superintendent, and fantastic transition. Speaking for the Board, reading her emails, we feel like we're there with her at the schools when she's doing her visitations and the photos, so good job. And then down the road here is Dr. Shayna Howell. She's our new chief academic officer. She's usually standing back there. Now she's with us. So, welcome Board, and they're a good team. So, best of luck. And now we're going to do our Superintendent Report.
Yes, great. Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Good evening, everyone. It is so wonderful to see parents and family and friends and students here, you know, with us this evening. This is always a very exciting Board meeting because we get to recognize our students for their, you know, skills, their artistic skills with our window painting, their skills and talents, and we have a number of awards that are going to be presented this evening. It feels like this event was so long ago, October 12, but it is such a tremendously great kickoff to the Halloween season and to Thanksgiving. We had spectacular weather that day, so it was so wonderful for myself and the central office team and all of our principals and administrators and teachers to be able to partake in the event and just see, you know, the students so actively engaged in what they were doing. And that was awesome to see. I know when we go around and we want to talk to them, they're a little hesitant because, you know, we always try to have our IDs visible so that they know we're from the district and we introduce ourselves. So they're all very good not to like engage, you know, with too many of the strangers out there. They do a great job, but just wonderful to have a conversation, you know, with them about, you know, their work. They're just so passionate about what they're doing, and it really is, I'm sure, the community thoroughly enjoys kind of walking up and down the streets of Main Street to be able to see all of our work, our students' work. So that's really spectacular. Also, and I don't know if any of the students in this room participated, but our bands, you know, played a very integral role at the parade, and that's always a tremendous, you know, celebration. I know, you know, from what I hear, and we got a beautiful thank you letter, you know, from the Spooktacular Committee thanking our bands for their participation, but when, you know, the younger, you know, kids and students are seeing the bands perform, they say, you know, "I want to do that when I go to high school, too." So that's a wonderful thing that we have that level of articulation and excitement around, around that. Always a big hit for the students was lunch, right? Having pizza delivered right to the window where they were working. So Federici's, a big shout out to them because every year they really come through, you know, for all of our students. I think, you know, there were, seemed like there were pies everywhere, and I was even opening up off, was kind of seeking, you know, a piece as I was going through. So that's always great. So tonight, you know, so many students are here. We have some honorable mentions and obviously, you know, our third and second and first-place winner. So we are super excited, you know, to see the work of our students and, and to recognize them for the outstanding work and really their commitment to that community celebration. So thank you to all of the students. So at this time, we have our Spooktacular Committee here with us this evening, and I think Toni, Mrs. Field, is going to... Okay. Great. She's the co-chair, right? You, I know we have many different roles with everyone in these...
I've been on too long. I've had too many titles, so we won't go there.
But Mrs. Guy, you know, we appreciate you kicking this off for us. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for that introduction. We do appreciate all the support we get from the Board and from the Regional. As you said, our Chair Toni Field is not here tonight. She does have, she did prepare a speech for me to read, but before I read her words, I want to say a few words. I'd like to thank Dr. Charles Sampson, who I know is not here. He has moved on, but he has been a great asset to us over the years, and we are certainly looking forward to working with Dr. Hazel. So again, thank you for those kind words. Also, for those of you who are not familiar with our Halloween Spooktacular in Freehold Borough, we have a movie night, Haunted Hayrides, Monster Mash, which also Jack-o'-lantern contest, and of course, the annual costume parade in which five of the bands participated this year. And if you've never been to our parade, the bands not only play beautiful music throughout the parade downtown, they also all dress in costume. So it's really a sight to see all the students really get into it and play and get dressed up and really participate. So we appreciate that, and we appreciate your cooperation in letting them join us. And now here are a few words from Toni Field, and I quote, "Good evening. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. I am unable to make it to the awards presentation tonight due to my having laryngitis, but still want to mention a few important things. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Education and the Regional High School District for inviting us tonight. As an artist and educator, I know the importance of the arts in education, and I sincerely appreciate your support of the Freehold Halloween Spooktacular Window Painting Event and all the artists who do participate. Thanks to all the amazing art students who work so hard to decorate the windows with their amazing artwork. We appreciate your sharing your talents with the community." I would also like this time to mention a particular student. His name is Preston Piaszeki. I feel as important that I mention Preston's character tonight and how he handled the situation that occurred on Window Painting Day. Thankfully, the situation was rectified, but thought you all should know that along with being an amazing artist, Preston is also a kind, considerate, and respectful human being. He handled the situation, which Maureen will mention later, with grace and, in my opinion, is a great role model for many. Our world could use a lot more people like Preston, and I want to personally thank him again for his display of dignity on Window Painting Day. I would also like to thank our new Window Painting Chairperson, Maureen Stumpf. She courageously and graciously accepted the position as the Window Painting Chairperson, and she has done a remarkable job of taking over for our dear friend Barbara Kane. Barbara loves this event, and she dedicated many years to making it the success that it is today. She would be here tonight also, but she did have another commitment, too. Barbara's shoes are definitely hard to fill, but as we can all see, Maureen has done a wonderful job of carrying on this beloved tradition, and we appreciate the support from Barbara and the district as she continues to lead this event in years to come. Having Maureen as a friend has been a blessing to me, and having her join me and our Spooktacular Committee is a true gift to our community." Unquote. I, too, am also proud to call her my friend. And now I'll turn the reason we're all here tonight, the awards, over to Maureen.
Hi, everyone. I know how excited we all are to celebrate each of our student artists tonight, but window painting is a team effort that we begin planning in July, so I would just like to take a moment to thank a few people before we begin the awards. Michael Federici, who unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, in Freehold Borough, have been with us for many, many years, supplying lunch for all the students, as you mentioned. We are truly grateful for his continued partnership in this event, and he and his staff are a joy to work with. I would also like to thank Tracy Vaz and the students of Freehold Intermediate School for doing such a beautiful job painting the windows at Broad Street Plaza. The businesses give them, give the kids ice pops, and it's one of my favorites just because they all walk over. I would like to thank DPW, the Fire Department, and our own Spooktacular Committee member volunteers for the many hours spent cleaning the windows this year of all our wonderful businesses that participated. I would like to thank Judy Guy, who I consider my good friend and co-chair for this event, even if she will not accept the title. She helped me with every aspect of this event, and I could not have done it without her. Our Spooktacular Chairperson, Toni Field, is one of the most passionate people I've ever met, and her dedication to Freehold Borough is outstanding. I am so proud of what she and our committee have accomplished this year. Now I would like to ask Annette Piazza and Rebecca Polycastro to come up, please. Rebecca Polycastro is the district's Communication and Project Coordinator. Thank you, Rebecca, for capturing the artist state with all your photos. Okay. And Annette, I have a little more to say. There are no words to describe how grateful we are for everything you do for this event, and our committee thanks you for being an integral part of our team, but I must personally thank you as well. Annette answered every question I had with kindness, and believe me, there are so many. She coordinates all the information given to the art teachers. She provides us with the information we need for awards and assisted us with tonight's presentation. She always made sure we have whatever we needed. Thank you, Annette. You are an asset to the district and certainly... Okay. I would like to ask Judy Guy, our Chairperson of Monster Mash, and Ursula Hurley, excuse me, Hurley, our co-chairperson of the Haunted Hayride, to come up and assist with awards. As always, the judges had an extremely difficult task judging this year's incredible creativity. I want to thank the volunteers Jeff Friedman, Lynn Reich, and Leslie Daly, who take time out of their busy day to walk around town to select the winners. I don't know how on earth they decided, but we have three honorable mentions in addition to our first, second, and third place winners. And here we go. Okay. Honorable mention is, first is, the painting is Green Lantern Vampire by Michael Carter and Ola Tomy Gabriel. The teachers are Marissa Alvarado and Max Boyle. Assistant Principal Art Supervisor is Dr. Dow. Ola Tomy Gabriel is not here tonight? Oh, is Michael Carter here? Oh, they're both not here. Okay, is there a teacher? Okay, great. I want to give them all to her. Our second honorable mention is Howell High School Principal Jeremy Braverman. The painting is Carol Ann Poltergeist. The student is Ariana Zatova. Teacher is Colleen Ware and Sarah Materia. Art Supervisor is Michelle England. Is Ariana here? Oh, good. Yeah, Colleen Ware. Yes, I said teacher. Our third honorable mention is Marlborough High School Principal Dr. David Bleakley. The painting is Scarecrow Be the Light by Valerie Moss. The teacher is Lauren Frazier, and the art supervisor is Jane Goldstein. Okay. Third place is Coltsneck High School Principal Dr. Brian Donahue. The painting is The Alphas by Madison Weg, Megan Rumsby, and Tara Durga. The teachers are Lauren Haveman and Audrey Lipkind, and art supervisor is Jennifer Gerges. I apologize if I am butchering names. I'm very sorry. Great job, you guys. It was gorgeous. Yeah. You want to come over here? Come here, Ursula. Okay. Second place was Freehold Township High School Principal Dr. Alicia Scousso. The painting is Sweeney Todd. The students are Anthony Shripa and Parker Chivain. Teachers are Marissa Alvarado and Max Boyle. Art Supervisor is Dr. Dow. I know, it was, it's, I mean, they're all just gorgeous. Sure you should. Wonderful. And now our first place winner is Howell High School Principal Jeremy Braverman. The painting is American Psycho by Preston Piaszeki. Teachers Colleen Ware, Sarah Materia. Art Supervisor Michelle England. Come on out, Preston. So I just want to say that due to a miscommunication on my spreadsheet, the wrong window was marked that morning for Preston to paint. So I just want to apologize for the error and say how impressed I was with how he handled it. He never even wavered on that day. He painted it, didn't know what was going to happen, and I'm just very impressed. So I just want to say that. I'm a little emotional because, again, it was a big deal that day, and it was a lot to deal with, and he did wonderfully. Before we conclude, I'd like to say thank you to Freehold Township High School Administration and students for creating the beautiful plaques that were handed to each student this evening. And once again, thank you to the Board for inviting us here tonight, and most especially, thank you to these art teachers and all these amazing students. This is just a small sampling. The paintings were just incredible, as they are every single year. So thank you all for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the committee being here. I know it's a very tough job to be able to judge all of these because they're just so talented. So thank you all. Congratulations to all of our winners and to the families, and a very special thank you to all of the teachers who work so closely with our students in preparing for this wonderful event. Going to continue on with our Board meeting, you know, for the folks who are being awarded this evening, you're more than welcome to stay, but you don't need to. So if you'd like to exit, I'll just give a moment and I'll continue on with the meeting. Congratulations.
Thank you for coming. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, we're going to continue with our Board meeting. Thank you all for coming. Thank you.
So a continuation...
Congratulations, everybody.
Yes, a continuation with my report. As Mr. Bruno mentioned, for myself and for Dr. Howell, you know, we were here in the district for so many, I was in my position 15 years prior to taking the Superintendent's seat, but had an opportunity, the first six days from November 1st through the following week, to actually, you know, go out to all of the schools. I spent three days in each building, the same period, going in and visiting classrooms and greeting and meeting, and for me, introducing myself to the students. And in each of those classrooms, just giving them some inspirational words and kind of a message from me to them, to our students, just about personal responsibility and really their primary role in school is, is their education and their academic program and really owning that and working over time to develop the confidence in everything that they're doing in their classes. And that was really important for me to convey to them, a personal responsibility to themselves and the choices that they're making as, you know, high school students each and every day in very large high schools with, you know, their social groups and everything that goes on and, you know, and just, you know, offering to them to continue to, you know, be responsible to their school community and get involved in everything that's going on in the high school. It's four short years, and, and we want to make sure that all of our students, you know, seize every opportunity that's available to them in high school, and they have all of the necessary supports to be able to thrive and to soar at Freehold Regional High School District and in their prospective high schools. So those visits were absolutely amazing. The students were so gracious when I came into their classrooms, and the teachers, I know, also appreciated the visit as well. So really, just a shout out to all of our students, you know, in the district. I will, you know, as part of my work, be always integrating myself, you know, into the schools and to what is happening. Dr. Howell and myself, over the next couple of weeks, are going to be engaging with groups of students, with fellow administrators in focus group meetings, and our Executive Student Cabinet is going to be a part of that process, too. So through the month of December, I'm really looking forward to those meetings. So super excited for all of the work ahead and the work of this Board of Education alongside, you know, with me as well. On tonight's agenda, and this is always something of big interest to students and to our staff, is our district calendar for next school year. So everybody can take a look and see, you know, what those, this is the first read. It'll be on for a second read in December, where all of the holidays fall, where all of the days off are. All of that is outlined, and parents like this very early on for their own preparation, and the same for the school district for our, you know, planning and preparation. This particular calendar that you're approving for '24-'25 does have three built-in snow days, but I do want to, you know, just utilize this moment to say that the calendar for this year only has two built-in snow days. So again, any of the makeup days would need to occur, you know, over the spring recess. So that is on for a read. Tonight also, I'm going to be presenting, it's called the SSDS Report, it's Student Safety Data Sheets. It used to be formally called, you know, a Violence and Vandalism Report, and also it, you know, outlines, you know, HIBs and substance abuse. I will be reporting, this is last year's numbers. It's the Phase II data from January through the end of the school year. And, you know, in some areas, the numbers have gone up, and in some areas, the numbers, you know, have gone down. But just to provide context, obviously, all of you know, we are a high school-only district, you know, with, you know, teenagers in six high schools and over 10,000 students. So when you hear the numbers, I mean, it's almost like you take it and almost like a divide by six, you know, you know, to just offer some context to these numbers. So it's, it's broken into categories, violence, vandalism, weapons, substance abuse, and substances. So in Phase II, which was from January to June of last school year, you know, incidents of violence across the district, we had 44. Six vandalism, four with weapons. Substance abuse, 64. And for the time period, half of the school year, confirmed HIBs, 42. Six simple assaults, 14 incidents of a threat, and 24 fights. Vandalism has damaged a property, we didn't have any incidents. One false public alarm. Five thefts, and no incidents of trespassing. Students that were in possession of a weapon for this time period, there were three, but assault with a weapon, zero. Substance abuse, drug paraphernalia, seven. Substance use confirmed, 30. And 43 students in possession. We did see a little uptick in those numbers, obviously legalization of marijuana, but our SACs and all of the interventions are in place to assist students. And, you know, the substance that we do see most prevalent is marijuana. So that concludes the student safety data. That is something that our administrators and myself, we keep a very close, you know, eye on, and, you know, have a district that we have full guidance departments, SAC counselors in every building to afford as many supports and interventions for students. Our district, I'm going to segue, you know, to Middle States. For those of you who don't know what Middle States is, it's an accreditation process that occurs every seven years in public school systems. We actually had a year through the COVID where we had an extension, so it's been eight years. I was, you know, in the role and, you know, was part of Middle States, you know, here in our district, but it's an accreditation. External educators come to our district and review all of our programs and our, our students' accomplishments and achievements, and it's really about a self-study for us as educators and as administrators to really take a close eye of everything that goes on in our district for continuous, you know, improvement and growth. We are right now in a self-study during this school year. Our visitation will be in the fall of '24, either in November or December, and part of that process, as we look at our internal data within the system, is also to survey, you know, our constituents. So all of the students were surveyed. The survey went out to parents and also to our staff. So that qualitative data will be part of the processes to be able to, you know, really seek an understanding of what our constituents, you know, are seeing and feeling and thinking about the experience here at Freehold Regional High School District, and along with our own, you know, components that we look at for Middle States will be able to kind of guide us with goals that we will generate for our work over, over seven years. And really, that's not absent of our district strategic plan, really goes in tandem and in harmony with that. So we think the timing of this is just perfect because, you know, we have so much, you know, good work that we know we have outlined in our strategic plan, and I know we're going to see a lot of parallels between the two. The Executive Student Cabinet members who, you know, work with me directly and our central office administrators were a wonderful part of our, our Middle States meeting that we had yesterday. Mr. Bruno, our Board President, was also at that meeting, and that was really just an opportunity to get everybody a full understanding of what Middle States is and pull all of our constituents together and really do some kind of foundational work. our constituents together and really do some kind of foundational work. So, I, you know, at this time, I'm going to, you know, ask Alexa and Nicholas, Alexa from Howell High School and Nicholas from Freehold Township High School, to go up to the podium, and I know you have a few things that you'd like to share with us about your experience.
I was really impressed how the students kind of led the groups.
Yes.
They spoke, they talked about the changes, and the guys did a good job, I was impressed. Usually the adults and the teachers in the room do that, you guys took over, it was great.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nick, I'm a senior at Freehold Township High School.
And I'm Alexa, I'm from Howell High School.
At the first Middle States Systems Teams Meeting, we, as members of the executive student cabinet, had the privilege of collaborating with a diverse group of stakeholders in our district's path towards Middle States accreditation. The procedure is essential because it ensures that our schools comply with the highest quality and efficacy standards. Our primary focus during the initial meeting was to review and affirm the district's mission, statement, and core values. This was done to ensure they align with our current plan for the district as represented in the district's strategic plan, Compass 3.0. Additionally, we thoroughly examined the FRHSD profile of the graduate, offering insights and suggestions, and suggesting potential revisions to better reflect the involving skills and qualities our graduates need.
This meeting was not only productive, but also an engaging and insightful experience, highlighting our collective commitment to excellence in education. The next steps in the process include our second Middle States System Team Meeting on January 31st, 2024. We'll review the finalized profile of the graduate and survey data and discuss draft system goals. Our focus will be on pinpointing three to five priority areas for growth in student performance, covering aspects like academic success and critical thinking, and in areas such as professional development or strategic planning. This meeting is crucial for guiding our district's future strategies. The MSA process is expected to take approximately 18 months, and will conclude with a site visit from the Middle States Accreditation Representatives in fall 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Do you remember, do you remember when the next meeting is?
You see how good they are?
Yeah, they're so good.
They are on our team. Yeah, and, you know, their work, they're really representative bodies of, you know, all of the students at their school, and even will meet on a monthly basis and have our agendas and we're conversing. They always have, you know, so much to share about their school and the experiences, and I know they go back and do excellent work, you know, in their school community. So, thank you to the executive student cabinet and your participation in Middle States, and so much more.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does any board members have any comments? We're good? Anybody, any comments? Okay, all right. We don't have any board reports today, so, Mr. Boyce, are there any changes?
Yeah, so, there are two addendum on the back table that will be incorporated into the agenda. These are not new resolutions, they're additions to existing resolutions. Those resolutions are G2, Approval of Appointments, G4, Approval of Honoraria, and also J5, Approval of Overnight Excursions. So, in addition to those addendum, we do have a new resolution to offer. It'll be item number J16, and I'll read it into the record for your consideration tonight. Motion to deny the HIB appeal and affirm the findings in FT 23-24-02 as discussed in executive session. Again, board, that will be J16, and we'll include that in tonight's agenda.
There is nobody signed up for public participation, so we'll just go right on with our board agenda tonight. We're gonna take G Personnel Negotiations. May I have a motion to approve G1 through G11?
Motion.
Second.
I hear two. Kathy and Amanda.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Kathy Ella?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, but same G5 as before, pardon, as before.
Mrs. Flavin?
Yes.
Ms. McCov?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Thank you. Next, we'll take H Programmed Operations Building, Transportation, and Physical Plan. May I have a motion to approve H1 through I5?
Move.
Not hearing any discussion, motion?
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Kathy Ella?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Flavin?
Yes.
Mr. McCov?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes, but I...
Bert? Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, and I abstained H4 myself. We're going to take Educational Programs and Administration, J1 through K3. Move. I hear second. Diane and Amanda, they teamed up over there, one and two. May, any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Kathy Ella?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Flavin?
Yes.
Mr. McCov?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Does any board members have old business to discuss? Any old business? Okay. And, Dr. Hayes?
Yes, yes.
Then we'll go back to the board and see, they might have some new business.
Sure. So, I'd like to take a moment. We have a new appointment this evening for Assistant Principal at Manalupin High School, Mr. Adam Bershadi, formerly the CECA. I see Nicholas, you know, cheering with excitement, but he's gonna lose you. Is a CECA over at Freehold Township High School, has been in the district for 16-plus years as a social studies teacher and as the supervisor of extracurricular activities. I'd like to welcome you to the administrative team over at Manalupin High School and congratulate you on your appointment to Assistant Principal. I know you have interviewed with us in the past and have done exceptionally well and really have proven yourself in the positions you've held in the district in serving primarily our students, but also our staff and the Freehold Regional Community. So, please stand to be recognized, welcome to the administrative team. Congratulations.
Would anybody like to add some new business?
I just wanted to make a comment. Thank you very much that Veterans Day is, again, on the calendar as a holiday, because we know how I feel about Veterans Day.
I just want to congratulate, once again, the Spooktacular winners, and of course, Mr. Versari.
And I'd like to just, to add my, well, with the bottom line, Diane, to finish that over.
Go ahead and get to work tomorrow, will you?
He's got two things going on.
You've got two things, you can do it, you're young. Okay, not hearing any more new business. Can I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I didn't even have a chance to say it. I have a motion to adjourn. I hear Amanda, I need a second, I got a second. All those in favor? Need is done.